Good evening, everyone. I would like to call our March 25th School Board meeting to order. Lisa, could you please call the roll?
Director Lalaberty.
Yes, I mean here.
Human.
Here.
Weber.
Here.
W Felton.
Here.
Claflin.
Here.
And Chair Roche.
Here.
That's six present.
Excellent, thank you. If we could rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
My pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I will ask for a motion to approve our meeting agenda for this evening as well as our work session minutes from March 11, 2024. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed? With that, the motion carries. And as we kick off most of our meetings with quality and action, I'm going to invite some visitors up for some discussion around nutrition services. Welcome.
So, good evening, Chairperson Roche, Dr. Zambrino, board members. Thank you for your time today. I'm Dory Pavel, the Director of Nutrition Services. This is Maggie Schmidt, the Assistant Director of Nutrition Services, and we're excited to be here tonight to highlight some of the great things going on in our department. The first thing we're going to highlight is our staff. In Nutrition Services, we have the unique opportunity to see a large number of the student population every day, and we have the very rewarding job of getting them the food they need to nourish their minds and bodies. A core part of what we are able to do, or, I'm sorry, a core part of why we're able to do some really great things in Nutrition Services is because of our staff. They are on the front line in creating a community with our schools because, as we know, food is what brings us all together. The staff all take pride in what they do, and they do it well. They are not only serving meals, but they are involved with students by participating in school spirit days, as well as offering special, and they love to offer specialty desserts like homemade pumpkin bars for Thanksgiving, cookies for the, before winter break, or Hal- Valentine's Day, sorry. And at the end of the school year, they always like to do something special in appreciation. Many of them are also involved in community events, like the Lions Breakfast and the Holiday Meal and the Scholarship Banquet. They want their kids to know that they care about them and they're proud of them. Next piece is student involvement. While there are many factors in bringing new foods to the menu, one of the most important pieces is student involvement. We are doing this in a few different ways. One is to sample items to the students during their regular lunchtimes. We have done this in a cup, for a couple of different items, one of them being our homemade wild rice, chicken wild rice soup. We got a met, we got a recipe from a school foods website, and we served it out to the kids based on that recipe. Staff and students went, we don't like it. So we brought it back, we tweaked a few things, we gave it to them again, they said, mm, it stills missing something. We took it back again, we made it right. They loved it. We launched it at the secondary school. It went so well that this fall we decided, or this winter, we decided to bring it into elementary schools, and surprisingly, the kids ate it like there was no tomorrow. Another way we're doing student involvement is with the Superintendent Student Advisory Council. In this, in this meeting, we get the opportunity to sample items directly to the students and to the adults, and we're able to get direct, immediate, very truthful feedback. Last year, at this meeting, we sampled a couple of things. I'll give you an example. We did jambalaya, we did overnight oats, chicken tinga, and a breakfast item called cinnamon dunkers. Each student was asked to rate, rank the samples on a tally sheet and say whether they wanted to, if they liked it, and if they wanted to see it on the menu. From this feedback, what we found out is they did not like the jambalaya. The chicken tinga was not like the stuff my dad makes, it's way better. And that the cinnamon dunkers are okay, but the overnight oats are super yummy and we want to see them on the menu. Based on that information, we did launch those overnight oats in a fruit, an overnight oat fruit parfait, and it took off amazingly at all levels. The last way is through student requests. We occasionally get students and some adults that will request items that they would like to see on the menu. Sometimes it's as simple as a spice. Last year, we got requests for tahin and to have hot sauce with the rest of the condiments. This type of request is pretty easy for us to accommodate, so now you can find both tahin and the hot sauce on the condiment bar at the secondary building.
Very cool.
The free meals for students, there's a lot of talk about this, and we are going to give a big thank you to the state of Minnesota for understanding that kids deserve the right to have a free meal, and that we know that by taking that stigma out of it, only kids who get free meals eat. By taking that out, we've seen a huge increase in participation, well, a large increase in participation, I guess I won't say huge. Now that all students have access to free meals, as you can see, the numbers, it's helpful for all. We can, we know that 43% of our students across the board are eating breakfast, and about 67.5% of the students are eating lunch. That's about a 10% increase over this time last year. While we have served breakfast free in our district for the last five years, we had a significant, significant increase in the number of students participating this year. Again, we took the stigma out. We believe that the increase is not only because the meals are free, but because we made some changes to the items on the menu. Things like freshly made, a freshly made sunrise sandwich, again, the overnight oats, and this winter at the secondary school, we've launched a homemade baked apple cinnamon oatmeal. Yeah, it's really good. We also have fun things like whole grain mini doughnuts and mini bread loaves from the Great Northern Bakery Company, which is located here in northeast Minneapolis. As you can see, it is also, there's also an increase in the number of lunches. Usually, we see about a 1% to 3% increase, so at 9.16, that's pretty significant. It's higher than we had anticipated. So again, the free meals were a hit, but there are other things that we believe are causing those numbers to increase so significantly, and Maggie is going to talk about some of those reasons why.
So I am the lucky one who's in charge of making the menus, so I keep people happy and upset. Most of the time happy, I'm, but we run a four-week cycle, so that means that we have, I lay out a menu grid for four weeks, and we rotated every, three times a year. So when the kids come back from spring break, they'll actually have a brand-new menu to come back to. We keep the staples that we know kids love, chicken tenders, I can't take them off. But we also are able to bring in a new recipe once a week per cycle. So we have about four recipes that we offer up every, every cycle, and then in the high schools, we do 10 to 15 new recipes every cycle. So it's a lot of work, it's a lot of trying to keep up on trends, research. One of the fun parts that we actually are able to do is we offer, we've been offering these local new flavors, which offers us a new partnership. One of the really great new items that we brought in is Hoyo, which is a company in Minneapolis that it's empowers and Somali women, immigrants, and so it's specifically, they are specifically hiring Somali women to hand-make their sambosas, and we put them on their menu, and it took off like crazy. And we offer it with a homemade chicken stew that we serve over rice, and we offer that, we set it out with herbs from like African flavors, and it's been very popular, and we're really proud of that. But that partnership offered us an introduction to Kebra, Kebracho, sorry, which is also a local Argentinean woman who makes empanadas, and we're hoping to get those onto the menu next year. So it's been a really great opportunity for us to really grow our flavors and our profiles, but also exploring local partnerships. All of the, the brands that you see on the screen are all local that we bring in, so it's, it's really, it's a lot of fun, and we are learning a lot about our different communities, and we're really lucky to be able to offer all of that. We are also offering global flavors. Like I said, putting out those spices with the, the chicken stew, this is actually a photograph of the sambusa with the chicken stew over rice, it's delicious. We do offer fresh condiments, and we make our own sauces, we have our own pickled and fermented vegetables that we do, we have kimchi at the high school, which was a new thing that we brought in last year, and that became really popular. We were surprised at how many kids love kimchi. We also make our homemade soups, which is a wild rice soup. We offer local wild rice on that one as well, so it's not only that, it's homemade. We have some amazing sauces that we brought out, Peruvian spices and things like that, and then just doing our research to follow the restaurant trends and fusion flavors. This year, we did a citrus celebration at the end of February, where we brought in all kinds of different citrus to offer the kids. We had blood oranges, caracara oranges, grapefruit, kumquats, tangelos, and a lot of kids had never tried many of those items, and it was really fun to see, I mean, kids were taking them, and then they were trading with each other and encouraging each other to try some. It was a really successful endeavor, and they apparently have loved kumquats, so who knew? You know, the things that we learn from these kids, it's really, really fun. We have fresh salad bars in the schools, we participate in the USDA DOD program, which offers us regionally fresh produce throughout the year, so it's, it makes ordering a snap for us. We roast our vegetables. If you've ever had our roasted broccoli, if you've not had it, come in and have some just on that day. It's, we go over 80 pounds of broccoli alone just on that day. It's popular and it's delicious. We offer all kinds of food, different fruits and vegetables every day to the kids. They can make a whole entire meal just based on our salad bars.
And the last part is positively changing our school meals. There are so many things that go into positively changing the meals at school. As you have heard, we've added a lot of new items and a lot of fresh fruits and vegetables, which the kids are actually eating, and, but that's not the only thing we're looking at. At the secondary building last spring, we looked at how the kids were coming into the serving area, and we noticed that they were really bunching up at the cashiers, and it was very crowded, and it was hard to get to one of the serving lines. So we, we took, we took that, we talked to a few students, and we discovered that if we just changed the way they came into the serving area and had them come in where they were going out originally, we could open up two new cashier lines, and that we could get the students through a lot faster, and it didn't block any of the serving lines. So that was a, you know, that's one of those things of, when you look at it, that's positively changing the way we have our school meals. Again, each elementary school has a, a fresh salad bar every day, allowing the students who might not want choice one or choice two as an entree, they can make a fresh salad every day, take their fruits and their milk, and they can get through that line, and that's a free meal. So it's a great way to introduce them to those things, and it's also a vegetarian option every single day. Another positive thing that's happening is that we are seeing more adults eating. When students see their teachers and other school leaders eating school lunch, it's one more connection that we get to make with those students and adults. We're trying to create an experience for students, from the smell of delicious foods as they walk in, to seeing the foods, all of the bright colors, textures, and using spices and sauces to make it what kids want to eat. Food is a way of connecting people like nothing else, and we in Nutrition Services are lucky enough to be part of it. Thank you.
Awesome.
Wow.
Impressive.
Absolutely.
Do you still do toasty dogs or Italian dunkers?
We do not do toasty dogs, but we do Italian dunkers. Yes.
So, I mean, all that food sounds amazing, and I work from home just about a half mile from here, so invite me to lunch anytime.
You're welcome anytime.
And, because that sounds amazing, but like, how did you develop the skills within your team to like, produce all this food? Like, did you have trainings? Is it self-taught? Like, how did you learn how to do this?
We've done some trainings, we've brought some people in and taught kid, you know, taught the adults how to use knife skills, how to cut up the fruits and vegetables in certain ways. We've also purchased things like Sunkist puts out a fruit slicer that just makes it super easy for us, and we can buy different blades that you set in it, and it's, simply pull the lever and cut fruit comes out. Honestly, we have really talented people. The chicken, the African chicken stew, that homemade chicken stew, we actually have a staff member who said, no, try this, try this, try this. I mean, it's part of her culture, and she was able to give us a fantastic idea on how to do these recipes. So we have a lot of talent within our group, and then we just, as we move on and we see that we need more things, we, we reach out to do training.
Excellent. I have a lot of regret not eating prior to this meeting tonight.
That's a good thing.
Absolutely. Thank you so much.
You know, John, if I may, Chair Roche, I would just say, you know, I've been in this 25 years, and over the career, lots of times you hear people say, you gotta do something about that lunch, you know, or, when I was principal or otherwise, and that's something I never hear here, and I, I agree with you, I say food is love, and they, they served out hundreds of thousands of meals, but like, I look at those plates and think, like, if you walked up to a food truck, you'd be paying 10 bucks.
Yeah.
For a lot of what we just saw there, and our kids get that every single day, which is awesome, and your passion for it is evident, so thank you.
Quarter million lunches served already this year. That's pretty remarkable.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much for what you're doing.
Yeah, absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Excellent. Man, I definitely should have eaten prior to this board meeting tonight. All right. Moving next, we did not have any public listening submissions prior to this meeting. Do want our community to be aware that we have changed the time and location that we are doing our public listening submissions. You can always do that directly through our website at any time, but if you do want to come and address the board, that is at our first meeting of the month, and that is at the district office at 6:30. Anyone is welcome to come in and share their thoughts with the board as a whole. Next, I will turn to Vice Chair Anne Claflin for our committee of the whole report, and that's going to kind of be from two meetings now with our new structure.
Yeah, this is a longer update of our work session work. The minutes from the March 11 meeting also give a really thorough overview of what we covered at that work session, but just to give everyone an update, the finance committee had been meeting to talk about the quarterly update. We presented this, Brady brought this to the work session, and the point of the quarterly update is really to look at how each fund is progressing over the course of the year. Are we spending more money in one area, less money? How is the timing of revenue and expenditures similar or different from other years? So mostly on pace with previous years, and gives us some awareness for where there are some differences. Nutrition Services was a piece that we had talked about, mostly because there's a difference that's happening in where our funding is coming from. With this extra demand for the meals in schools, we are still getting the funding for that, it just depends on if it's being paid for by the state or the federal government, and that's based on folks filling out educational benefits forms, and we still need to get those forms filled in. It gives families a lot of other resources as well, and it will help get more money from the federal government rather than the state government to cover those lunches. We also took a look at our 2024-25 budget, how to do some talent development within our schools, looking at the kids who are accelerating faster, how to really give them the challenges that they need. Also, in our new budget, there'll be an Assistant Director of Student Services hired, and this is a vacancy that's very desperately needed filled within our school. Just the number of students that are needing extra services is increasing, it's about 21% of our student population and increasing across all of our schools, so we really do need to fill that position. And we're going to be facing some of the same challenges that other districts are facing, where that continuing declining enrollment from declining birth rates means our district is shrinking, that's going to have some budget impacts, and we'll start seeing that more and more as we go along. We also discussed our facilities and started planning ahead for a new bond that we would take to voters in, in probably a few years. There's a lot of deferred maintenance that needs to be addressed. We wanted to look at our space utilization, make sure that we're using all of our buildings to the best of their capacities, and how we align what those uses are with our needs, such as the CLC building just lacks facilities for those students to participate fully in things like physical education. And it's more disconnected from the, the high school and some of the other services that are available. There'll be community task forces and many community conversations around facilities as this moves forward, but we're trying to figure out what this timing would look like so that there is no impact to the tax that you would see levied on your home. We also discussed some staffing changes where, just within the process of the year, we need to look at where we have staffing changes to make, fixing some typos and holidays. We'll hear more about those later this evening. Just as a whole, within this structure of the work session, we were able to accomplish and have some really great discussions about all of these topics rather than being rushed through. We're also able to have updates from our cabinet members. Tina Moses was able to come and speak to us about the recent cybersecurity incident, and I'm sure things have progressed so much since then that I don't know what the latest update would even be, but Tina Moses reflected to us just how efficiently all of the IT staff had gone in and gotten the district core services back up and running, how quickly teachers were able to print again. Those little things that are so critical to everyday functioning, and then working on addressing this larger cybersecurity incident. It was a long meeting, we got through so much.
Almost three hours.
Right. It was long. We discussed how we can be more engaged with our community and have some role in advocacy. And recently, Superintendent Zambrino and Chair Roche had been at the Capitol testifying on a bill that Senator Klein had introduced that would help our community, because we have a lower commercial tax base. We really need to also have support from the rest of our community, because this bill wouldn't just be about school funding, it's really about the tax base of our whole community. It's not a school funding issue, and how do we create that community advocacy to really help push for things that benefit our whole town? Among some of the committee updates that we heard, let's see, the District 917 has hired some new teachers from the Philippines, it sounds like an, just amazing opportunity to get some new teachers in helping a program that needs some additional staffing, and a lot of other items came up. One that we should highlight is a request to change the name of the football field, and there's a naming committee formed, and there's going to be some process for deciding how that moves forward. Ah, that was just the last committee of the whole, or work session. Tonight's work session also covered some of those same topics of staffing, how we're going to adjust our staff balance for the next year, and there was quite a bit of discussion around what our priorities should be. Also discussed the policy review cycle, we'll have policies come up later this evening, and just the process of going through those, how quickly we're able to with our new system as well, having the business meetings just once a month. And finally, set the stage for doing a board evaluation of how we are doing our work and what changes we would like to see made in the way that we are functioning as a board. That was tonight's work session, and I think that covered everything. That was, we've really done a lot in those work sessions, and I appreciate the opportunities to have conversations in that new system of having the longer work session. And again, just for the public information, those work sessions at the district office are open to the public.
Absolutely. Excellent. That was a lot.
Yeah.
We might be on spring break right now, but man, we certainly have been busy at the board level. Next, I will turn it to Superintendent Zambrino to provide some highlights from around the district.
Great, thank you, Chair Roche. Yeah, we have been busy. It's been, it's been busy even though it's quiet. We are on spring break, so hoping our staff, students, families are, are having a relaxing fun and safe spring break. We know we've got some trips going on overseas even, and so it sounds like those are going well. I look forward to hearing from the students, and anyone who's chaperone knows how that's gone. I think we got DC and France and a lot going on. So classes do resume next Monday, April 1st. Hard to believe it's April 1st. Students, no ideas for April Fool's Days, please, let's let your teachers ease back into the classrooms. Thank you for covering that on the board structure. It is, it has been a shift we've made, really to create more space for conversation and the depth of work we have to do, and so we will have our typical, similar to the structure we've had before, like we're doing tonight on the fourth Monday, but that other one will be at the district office the second Monday, again, open to the public, but just a little more time where we don't have to hustle to get across the hall and get back on camera. We're looking to continue to do all the great work in the business of the district, but a little more space for, for this board to do the important work you all do, and you're all working hard, so thank you for that. Related to our board, we are at that time of year where we're looking to refresh with our student board reps. There's a picture of Renata has been doing a fantastic job as one of our student reps. She is on that trip overseas too, so that's why she's not here with us tonight, but we, we know how important student voice is, we heard that from our Nutrition Services team. I would pit them against anybody that, the work they do, and the whole team, of course, that's just the face of it there, but we do want that student voice to continue, so we're going to work to recruit students, we're going to look to have a couple, and they can be in grades 11th or 12th next year, so we're getting that information out at the high school to get students to apply, so excited about that. This time of year also brings in our Silver Apple Award, so this is the last week to submit nominations for the Roxanne Silver Apple Award. I've gotten to do that a few times, because when I came in with that early start, I got to do that this, that spring and last year, and it's a very emotive, you know, as you can imagine, to, to get an award like that as a staff member from, from the kids, and so excited to see who, who wins those awards this year. Last week, we had our second annual South St. Paul Job Fair, so we did that in partnership with, with the city and did that at our secondary building. Just nice to have an opportunity to showcase what's out there, especially we know there's seasonal jobs, but always have openings with this job market, and so appreciate Joel Milt here, our HR director, and the whole team. I know I'm looking, Lisa was there and others that are in the room, and appreciate Chair Roche and Kim Human coming to say thanks to the team, it means a lot when they're putting in that 12-hour day to have you present, so thank you for doing that. And some highlights, things going around the district. So we, as part of our Equity and Integration Funding, we have to have an integration partnership. So, we, as part of our Equity and Integration Funding, we have to have an integration partnership, and so we do have that with some neighboring districts. And we have three of our high school students representing us on youth equity as youth equity ambassadors. And so, they're getting to meet once a month and build community and learn leadership skills and share about cultures and traditions. And so, if you want to learn more about that, you can hop on our website and look in the news section. Had an opportunity last week, I was with Principal Borg. We have some standing meetings where we check in, and it coincided with a day they were spending with their seventh graders with Youth Frontiers. So, Youth Frontiers, I've worked with them both with students and adults, and in this case, they were working with students, so coming in to help inspire, you know, the development of character and community. It was a full-day retreat. They had games and different things, and then they had high school students as student leaders. So, it was really fun because as we've had that superintendent student advisory council, boy, that's a lot of words to pack in one title. A lot of the kids who participated in that were the leaders as well of those, of the groups. You can see how those leadership experiences really help shape and develop the culture of our buildings. And I'll tell you, I always say our kids are the best, so it was fun to see them in that space together. Speaking of the best students, middle school has been up in the game with the honor roll, and so congratulations to our middle school students who made the honor roll. They had a ceremony, but what I love is kind of bringing it up a little bit and having the certificates, but hoping to see more of those magnets out there. So, if you can see, it says SSP, I'm sorry, Proud of My SSP Middle School Student Honor Student. And so, those, we were debating, do you do bumper stickers? Seems like people don't like bumper stickers too much anymore because they're hard to come off, although those are ones you probably leave on anyways with so much pride. But fun seeing those pop up. So, as we have more of those ceremonies, we'll see a lot more of those magnets popping up around town to brag about our kids. Also had a chance to see this one in action too. So, Junior Achievement North was at Lincoln, worked with second and third graders. So, it's a nonprofit that helps students with hands-on financial learning. So, they usually have a theme where kids have a project, like your city manager, a business. So, they learn a lot of skills, real-life concepts around finances, career readiness, and entrepreneurship. And so, nice to see that with the kids at the younger age. We have been hearing through our increased student engagement how they really want to learn these life skills. We heard that a lot at the high school around job skills and life skills. So, nice that we're starting that early through junior achievement. And then, very fitting space to have this at our Capoja Elementary Education Center. So, third and fifth grade students had a visit from an author, Tara Perron Blue Hummingbird Woman. It was a local Native American woman who wrote the book, "Takosa Walks with the Blue Moon Girl." And so, she came to read and share stories about the Dakota ways and language and culture, and then just sharing about her family's tradition. So, love that that was happening at the sacred ground that is Capoja, and so appreciate her coming to spend that time with us. We, as I said, are on spring break. We have some non-school days, April 26th, May 24th, and May 27th. Some dates to remember, we have open-door food distribution happening on April 17th at Capoja, and they got a big Chuck E. Cheese fundraiser. Jose, who's the head of the PTA down there, is very fired up about this, wants to make sure everybody knows to come to Chuck E. Cheese. So, April 19th from 3:00 to 9:00, that'll be happening. And then, I was actually at Lincoln when a parent called and said, "When is Spring Picture Day?" So, I just heard this when I was there last week, April 23rd, they're doing a Spring Picture Day. So, mark the date. At the secondary, they have secondary student family connect 4:00 to 8:00 on April 25th. And then, here we go with all the fun in spring, prom on the 26th. So, always fun to see the kids just dressed up in those beautiful suits and dresses and things that they choose to wear. With athletics and activities, we have a middle school track starting when, right when we come back on the first. And then, the banquets, again, so much going on in the district in the spring on May 1st, the athletics and activities awards banquet. So, always an emotional night when you're kind of hitting that capstone of your time here in South St. Paul. And again, I've been there now, this will be my third time, and it's amazing the accomplishments of our kids. They are incredible, but it also speaks volumes about the adults, the parents pushing them and guardians and elders in their lives, and of course, the staff who are pushing them along through all those great things. As always, our meeting material is available on our website, and you can track all the things that our board is doing.
Excellent.
Thank you.
Lots of things going on.
Lots going on.
Love that. All right. We now shift to our consent agenda, items that are typically financial claims, staffing, and personnel in nature and have been presented in our board book. This also includes adjustment to district holiday schedule, retirements, leaves, all of those are sort of inside of our consent agenda. I am asking for a motion to approve our consent agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? With that, the motion carries. Up next, we have a wealth of policy items that are under review. And in our coming board meetings, you are going to see many, many more as we are in the height of our review cycle. But I want to turn over to Kim Hume to also kind of summarize a little bit around some of the discussion around what has come. This is the first reading of these policies. They will be on the next two agendas before we vote for them, but maybe just kind of high-level summary of some of the items that we have been looking at.
So, we have eight policies that are under review this meeting for a first reading. The first one we discussed at our policy meeting that's listed here is the number 307, Emergency Closing for Schools. This is just bringing the wording more in alignment with what now the legislature says regarding the requirements for when staffing has to report when our buildings are closed and how we pay those staff. And also, it gives us the opportunity to find when we close. It doesn't have to be the most difficult weather situation possible. We have a little more wheelie. It could be just difficult. So, I think that's a positive change. Number 403, workload limits for certain special education teachers, and also number 608, instructional services for special ed. There were no major changes. It was just time to be reviewed. We review all policies in a three-year cycle. I do think we renumbered one of them so it was in alignment with what MSBA has it coded at, just so it's easier for us to refer back to those policies. We have two policies regarding mandated reporting that we reviewed, 414 and 415. This was just further defining mostly what is abuse. They're not super fun reads, but it's important. And of course, these feed into the training that our staff and teachers get every year so that we're making sure everyone is taking care of the best they can while they're with us. Policy 615, Basic Standards Testing Accommodations, Modifications, and Exemptions for IEP Section 504 Accommodation and LEP Students. This was really just cleaning it up. It referenced things that are no longer happening in our schools, so we just want to make sure that our policies reflect the testing and the requirements that our students have. Policy 621, the Read to Ensure Academic Development Act, or the READ Act. I'm sure a lot of people have heard a lot about it. It was pushed last year through the legislation, and we just wanted to make sure that we had a policy that was easy for our community to understand because it is state legislation. We're going to follow it whether we have the policy or not, but we want it to be accessible for our families and our students. And finally, policy 902, the Use of School District Facilities and Equipment. Just kind of mostly cleaned things up from when it was last updated, made sure that our local sports groups and other local community groups that use our facilities are not being overly charged with kind of an error when we made the last adjustment. And also allows for ongoing changes to like how our different facilities are used, to be posted online instead of built into the policy so that we can make sure that the information is available to the public and reflective of what's most current.
Excellent. Great review. And we'll have many more coming, and I'm assuming we'll sort of do a review on the first reads for these going forward in our public meetings. So, those are available, and we will vote on that in two meetings from now. That brings us to our business items for the ninth. And up first, looking for approval of the South St. Paul School Board to approve the resolution for discontinuing and reducing positions. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
And for discussion, I will turn it over to Joel Miltier.
Good evening. This district is proposing a resolution for the discontinuance of educational programs and positions to align staffing with projected enrollment for the 24-25 school year. The district will need to make reductions in the following areas, dean of students at the middle school and classroom teachers. As we continue to work through the staffing planning for the 24-25 school year, there may be additional need to bring further reductions to the board later this spring to ensure we are being fiscally responsible while working to maintain low class sizes for students. We are now asking the school board to approve the resolution for the above-noted position eliminations and reductions for the 24-25 school year.
Thank you. Any questions or discussion? This was brought forward and discussed in our committee of the whole as well, so there has been some previous discussion on this. Lisa, will you please call the roll?
Director Hume?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
W Felton?
Yes.
Claflin?
Yes.
Lollaberty?
Yes.
And Chair Roche?
Yes.
At 6 a.m.?
Thank you. Up next, I'm looking for approval for the South St. Paul School Board to approve the resolution relating to the non-renewal of probationary teachers. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
And for discussion, Joel Miltier is already in place.
Thank you. Each year, we must release a number of probationary teachers for various reasons, including student-driven scheduling, changes in enrollment, budget reductions, curriculum changes, licensure issues, mid-year placements, and performance issues attached as a resolution to terminate the contracts of a number of probationary teachers. This resolution terminates teaching contracts for those listed at the end of the current school year, 23-24, with a non-renewal for the 24-25 school year. We're seeking the approval from the school board tonight for this resolution to non-renew these teaching contracts for next school year.
Any further discussion or questions? As before, and this was also brought forth to us at the committee of the whole as well. Lisa, will you please call the roll again?
Director Hume?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
W Felton?
Yes.
Claflin?
Yes.
Lollaberty?
Yes.
And Chair Roche?
Yes.
At 6 a.m.?
Thank you. All right. Up next for business item, looking for approval for the South St. Paul School Board to approve the acceptance of gifts. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
And for discussion, I turn this over to Brady Hoffman.
Good evening. We have a few donations on the agenda tonight. The first few are for the All Night Senior Party from Dakota Electric Association, Key Community Bank, Santa Max USA, and the South St. Paul Lions Charitable Gambling. The South St. Paul Open Foundation made a couple donations for wrestling and basketball salaries, and then we have some classroom supply donations from the students achieving volunteering excellence. So, once again, these donations support our schools, and we're incredibly grateful for these organizations and the support they provide.
Absolutely. I have never seen a district who has the level of community support that we have, and very grateful for that all the time. Lisa, will you please call the roll on that again?
Director Lollaberty?
Yes.
Hume?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
W Felton?
Yes.
Claflin?
Yes.
And Chair Roche?
Absolutely.
At 6 a.m.?
Thank you. All right. Well, we will not have a student board rep report tonight. I would pass the message to make sure Renata was given a hard time for not being in, at tonight's meeting, but I think being at St. Michelle in France maybe outweighed being here with us tonight. So, I will turn to our board members to provide maybe a little insight to some of the committee work that they have been up to since we were here last. And I will turn it over to Monica Weber.
So, I'm the board representative for South St. Paul to intermediate District 917. We, I think at the last meeting, we approved Superintendent Favors' contract. He has been the superintendent. This is be the end of, I believe, his first contract, so entering his next contact, contract, July 1st. So, we voted to approve that. We do have some new teachers who are starting, who are in an exchange program with the Philippines, and so that's very exciting to welcome some new teachers into that district. And trying to think, other topic, just, you know, talking about, you know, enrollment in teachers and staffing and budgets and the same thing that every other school district goes through at this time of the year. And then, with the Association of Metropolitan School Districts, first committee deadline for the legislature has passed, and so we continue to, you know, go through the end of session, and there are a number of different educational bills that are being discussed. I would like to echo Board Member Claflin, who talked about contacting the legislature and asking them to support Senator Klein's bill, which would be some property tax relief for the members of our community. Again, this doesn't just impact the school district, this impacts the entire community. And I think it would be a great bill for the legislature to consider as we move forward. And that was Senator Klein has authored that bill.
Excellent. Nikki Lollaberty?
I have nothing at this time.
Okay. And Claflin?
Let's see, the next local issues meeting will be this Wednesday at the library at 8:00 a.m., and the last one, the February meeting, was held at the high school. It was a wonderful opportunity to invite a lot of folks into the high school. Many of them had not been in in quite a while and kept saying how much it's changed. It's good for people to see how our schools have changed. And at that meeting, I gave a brief overview of what we're talking about in the finance and long-term planning facilities committee. That's an issue where we're really looking at the budgets and have to think about how we're moving forward. And then, a few events that were shared by other groups at that meeting were the Read Across South St. Paul Program. If you are interested in that, you can email Deb Griffith and have that opportunity to go into one of the elementary schools and read a book to a classroom. The books are all chosen by our library. There's an environmental resource fair coming up April 5th, and the Park's master plan is open for comment and will be available at the March 30th egg hunt. And I wanted to mention all of the families that I saw at the Capoja Spring Festival last week, last Thursday. It was just so much fun to see all these kids so proud of their school, so excited to show off, and feeling so at home. You saw the kids come in just like, no, this is their place. They were the ones giving their parents directions on, this is where we're going to go, this is what we're going to do. They knew it. And it was really fun watching them get engaged in all of these different projects that were around the gymnasium and show off the artwork that was decorating the hallways. It was a lot of fun.
Excellent. Thank you. Wendy Felton?
Yes, I have been attending a couple of things in support of our schools. First of all, I thoroughly enjoy at the high school in the secondary building. I did talk to Mr. Holson about the play that was just held a couple of weeks ago. They always do such a wonderful job, so I thanked him so much for doing the plays. And I also did attend a taco feed at the Croatian Hall, which was in support of our Capoja School student support, so that was excellent. I really, really liked their tacos. It's really good. And just, and one other thing that I have done personally for several years, there is a fundraiser available to help our South St. Paul baseball teams. This is a fundraiser. I purchased two of these coupons. They're $20 each. They're wonderful, wonderful coupons. All of these are available on this card. So, if you'd like to support our baseball team, reach out to them, and they will gladly supply that to you. It is really, really nice. And as a reminder, as I serve on the Senior Center Board of Directors, we are coming up May 1st is our fashion show, and there is a $20 cost on that. That does pay for our lunch, which is provided by the coop, with chicken, mashed potatoes, gravy, vegetables, salads, all kinds of really, really good stuff, desserts. So, if you're interested, please reach out to Central Square to make your reservation for that. And the last thing, on a personal note, I was quite surprised last week when I got my mail. As you know, as you've heard, back in Jan- As you know, as you've heard, back in January, I did receive the MSBA Board of Directors All-State School Board Award from them. Unbeknownst to me, when they mailed this out, there I was on the front of this, this journal magazine. So I want to thank them. And like I said, it was, it was a wonderful surprise. So thank you very much.
Excellent. Thank you. Kim Human?
All right. Community education, Tridusick did not meet in March because of spring break with the various schools in our system. So next, we meet on Tuesday, April 9th. Last, was it Monday, the 18th? Is it just Monday? I participated in MSBA's Day at the Capitol. There were about 75 school board representatives from around the state who were there. It was interesting, an opportunity to listen to a couple panels, one a House panel and one a Senate panel with representatives from the education policy committees from each of the houses. I felt really reassured, the things that they want to focus on are things that we want them to focus on too. So that is great, great news for us. Hopefully, the work gets through. As Monica has kind of indicated, everything is unknown until it's done. So there's that. And I also, like Ann, had the opportunity to get Capoja for the Spring Festival. And I think my favorite part is they had a drafel, and some of the most popular prizes were the opportunity to spend time with the teachers one-on-one. My kids put so much money, honestly, tickets, right, into having ice cream with like old first-grade teachers or having lunch with teachers. And I think that's just really speaks to our staff and their commitment to our kids, that our kids feel that and even outside of class time, want to be able to spend that time with them.
That's great. Thank you very much. I want to again thank Nutrition Services for coming in on spring break and sharing all that they do for our schools as well, and express a great deal of appreciation for everything they've done, because they've certainly gone through a lot of changes over the last two years in terms of what Nutrition Services looks like inside of our schools. With no further items on our agenda, I am looking for a motion to adjourn our meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? With that, the motion carries. This meeting is adjourned at 6:52 tonight. Everyone have a good.